Well, welcome to the January 17th, 2019 Business Meeting. And first up is roll call, Don Crapp.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, we have the ever-dapper and debonair Stephen Madcor, serving as county council this morning, and the immaculately well-organized Mary Rathke, serving as U. A clerk to the board. So I'll start the roll with Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
I'm Wes Wonderful.
Here.
And Chair Bernard.
Here. And I'd also like to announce that Commissioner Fisher is out this morning at a conference, be here later this afternoon. So please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So the board will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a housing authority for the next item. Also, I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner, Paul Reynolds, who is here quite often, and I probably expect him to be here quite a bit since we're doing a lot of housing work. And with that, we'll ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, there's one item on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. It's approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Metro for the Clackamas Heights Master Plan.
Do any of the commissioners want to remove that item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
Removed in second, that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for spending so much time with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn as Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. And to start off with a reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the consideration of adoption of a zoning development ordinance 275. These are amendments to the floodplain management district provisions of the zoning development ordinance, and we have Mr. Nate Boderman here to present this to you.
Nate, one second. Ken, I missed your light, so go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to that Housing Authority Consent Agenda, so the public actually knows what that was about. Metro is helping us with our housing plan, and it's actually funding some of that planning. So building relationships with our partners in the region is an important thing that we do, and this is the kind of thing that can happen when you have those positive relationships. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Nate.
Good morning. This morning, we are recommending approval of ZDO 275, which is adoption of an ordinance to implement the previously approved land use. These contain amendments to the floodplain management district provisions found in the county's zoning and development ordinance. Specifically, this would adopt new floodplain maps for the Sandy River Basin. These maps are put together by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. They'd also amend, or this ZDO 275 would also amend countywide standards to new development in the 100-year floodplain. So usually, we do a little summary, but you just had a hearing on this last week, so I'll spare you that part. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this December 10th, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of staff's proposal to the board. As I just mentioned, the board held a public hearing last week on January 9th, and by a vote of 4-0 orally approved, the ZDO 275 proposal is recommended by both staff and the Planning Commission. So staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect the board's decision made on January 9th, and it's staff's recommendation that you adopt the ordinance materials that we provided for you today. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any clarifying questions?
I'm happy to make a motion. I move we read ZDO 275 by title only.
Second.
It's removed in second, that we read ZDO 275 by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries, and ask clerk to read ZDO 275 by title only.
Okay, ordinance number ZDO 275, and ordinance amending section 703 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt ZDO 275 amendments to the floodplain management district provisions of the zoning and development ordinance, as previously approved at the January 9th, 2019 land use hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we adopt ZDO 275 amendment to the floodplain management district provision of the zoning and development ordinance, as previously approved on January 9th, 2019 land use hearing. I just want to add that I've had, it's been a long time coming. New technology has allowed us to adopt new maps, which will have both a positive impact on some folks. I had a gentleman in my office who's been arguing this for 10 years, and it'll have a negative impact to some folks. But these are new maps, and there's other provisions that were required by the federal government, I believe, that we clean up ZDO 275, and we're doing that with this too. Okay? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Oh, Ken, you're up again. Sorry.
Again, just for the benefit of the general public, the practical implication of this is that people will be able to get insurance that may not have been able to get it in the past, and in some cases, it could conceivably reduce the rates that they would have to pay for that flood insurance. So as you said, it is a long time coming.
All right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item in citizen communication. And Les Poole and Thelma Hagen-Miller, please join us. So whoever wants to be first.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Bernard and commissioners. Hi, Ellen. My name is Thelma Hagen-Miller. I reside in the unincorporated area of North Clackamas County known as Oak Grove. I would like to read into the public record a letter that I wrote to the editor of the Clackamas Review, and it was published in the January 16th edition of the paper, came out yesterday. After attending several community outreach meetings regarding Happy Valley's decision to withdraw from the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, or NCPRD, I am convinced the process has become mired in distrust and lawsuits for one simple reason: the citizens never voted on this decision. NCPRD was formed in 1990 by a vote of the citizens of unincorporated North Clackamas County and the city of Milwaukee. Happy Valley annexed to NCPRD in 2006 by a vote of the citizens of Happy Valley. In June of 2017, the Happy Valley City Council, not the citizens of Happy Valley, voted to withdraw from NCPRD. The citizens then approved a ballot measure to transfer the 54 cents per $1,000 of property tax assessment they were paying to NCPRD, to the city of Happy Valley, for creation and maintenance of its own parks district. What is wrong with this picture? The citizens are being left out of the discussion. Why is no one considering a vote of the citizens on the critical withdrawal issue? That vote could be scheduled for the next special district selection. The only way to solve this impasse is to take the decision-making back from the courts and the lawyers and return it to where it has been before, in the hands of all the NCPRD Happy Valley citizens. I urge concerned citizens of Happy Valley and NCPRD to learn more and/or weigh in on this issue at two upcoming meetings. Tuesday, January 22nd, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Rock Creek Middle School, 14897 Southeast Park Lane Drive in Happy Valley, Oregon, and Wednesday, January 23rd, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Rex Putnam High School in the Commons Student Center at 4950 Southeast Rothey Road in Oak Grove, Oregon. This meeting information is available on the NCPRD website, and respectfully, I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, and I look forward to reading the article in the paper when I grab it. I do want to say that the framers of our constitution, if you will, the people that actually, the folks that actually draft up our rules, regulations, and state laws, identified a method, O.R.S. 198, and in that section of special districts, it defines really an orderly withdrawal process in which the citizens ultimately do vote. So I believe the judge, Breithart, if I got his name correct, ruled that the process wasn't followed, and should that process be followed, indeed, a vote of the citizens would ultimately happen, should Happy Valley successfully or not withdraw.
Yeah, so somebody has to petition the BCC to put it on the ballot. They certainly have that ability to do it. I've had an opportunity to talk to them. They feel they would lose, and that's why they tried to go around that. But I think a reasonable conversation with the district, district-wide, at least would give the citizens an opportunity in the district to have a discussion and make that determination. And then that, for me, would inform us whether we should put it on the ballot or not, because it's a district-wide issue. It isn't about Happy Valley, which is 20,000 people now. It's 120,000 people that we need to talk to, and that's why we're doing these community meetings, to inform people. Last time, it was very poorly attended. Hopefully, the next two will be attended, and thanks for telling folks when and where it is. Ken?
I just want to say that I think you framed both the issue and the solution about as succinctly as anybody I've heard, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Les?
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone, former neighbor of Thelma's. Isn't she great? She is. I could talk about some of the things Thelma's done for my entire five minutes. Oh, wait, I only get three. Okay. Couple of things. I will be meeting with Chair Bernard today, and we're going to talk about the proposed vehicle registration fee. And as someone that's an advocate for roads, I'm repeatedly asked, how are we going to fund repairs if we don't raise gas taxes, if we don't take action, if we don't have a fee? And there's some answers out there, and because we're meeting today, I'm not going to belabor the vehicle proposed fee, but it's related to a bigger theme, and that is, I've gone to Salem, and I see a carbon tax being proposed, which is basically a tax on fuel, a thing that's causing riots in France, and I don't mean to sound extreme. We had a 10-cent-per-gallon gas tax for road maintenance that took place this year. There are so many fee increases, additional fee increases for vehicle registration on top of what we had at the start of this year. And what's happening, of course, is, at the same time, we're spending more and more and more on our transportation dollars. As a consumer, a citizen, whatever label one chooses, we feel like we're getting less in a lot of ways, because the product quality is declining, right? If you look at transportation as moving goods and services, look at it as true-put, look at it as being an efficient way of getting things done, we're way off course there. And I don't, I don't believe that the commission certainly can change all of that. I'm more making a statement of something I believe that's fairly easy to substantiate. And so when I come week after week and talk about transportation and land use, my concerns about transportation aren't just about congestion and spewing fumes in the air, it's about the safety issues that arise. Why does it seem like there's more crazy drivers out there? They're not crazy, they're getting impatient. You can only sit there so long before you do something stupid, unless you've got a lot of self-control. So we've got some congestion issues that weren't properly addressed by the legislature. We've got to focus on our distribution network. We've got to stop this crazy idea of tolling us to use existing lanes and putting the money into a giant pit. That's not going to work. So I, as someone who's a co-petitioner on the measure to require a vote on their proposed method of using tolling, and someone that comes to you week after week after week, apologize if I seem repetitive and redundant, but like so many things, this can of worms and this problem is just getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and as I heard last week, we've got over 100 folks coming into Portland area, you know, just week after week, day after day, and most of them are bringing cars. So thank you for your time, as always, and I'll be back.
Yeah, there's probably more crazy drivers, because there's more drivers.
Truth, too.
Yeah, you know, some people have complained about traffic congestion, which I totally agree on about, but also, it's nice to see people on the road going to work. There was a time there might not have been jobs to drive to, and at least there are jobs now. So, all right, thanks. With that, we have a public hearing. Don?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider a board order offering to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville, a portion of Ritter Road, County Road number 799. And we have Mr. Michael Bays, our survey supervisor, here to present this item to you.
Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Michael Bays. I represent the county's Department of Transportation and Development. Today, we have before you a request to approve a board order for the transfer of jurisdiction of Ritter Road from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville. This request has been discussed by the staff of both jurisdictions. Clackamas County and the city of Wilsonville have agreed to the transfer of Ritter Road to the city with the intent of streamlining roadway improvements, eliminating confusion to the public, and to approve the inefficiencies of maintenance and public service. Ritter Road is located entirely within the city limits of Wilsonville and runs along the county line between Clackamas County and Washington County. Washington County has already completed a transfer of jurisdiction of their section to the city. The portion of Ritter Road to be transferred is approximately 2,700 feet long and contains approximately 81,765 square feet of right-of-way. A notice for today's action was published for four consecutive weeks in the Wilsonville Spokesman newspaper. This request is also consistent with the county's policy and practice of partnering with local jurisdictions to provide the necessary government services at the least cost for our citizens. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond. Thank you.
Any questions? At this point, we will open a public hearing and ask anyone who would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of this hearing, ask if, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order offering to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville, a portion of Ritter Road, County Road number 799.
Second.
Removed in second, that we approve a board order offering to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville, a portion of Ritter Road, Clackamas County Road number 799. So I used to drive this all the time when I lived in Wilsonville. That's, you kind of drive across this lake, which sometimes is quite full, and then Ritter Road is right off of that, right after you go under a bridge where the train crossing is. Numerous times, I've been there and seen trucks jammed under that railroad bridge off of Ritter Road, but I'm glad to get rid of another road. With that, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda, and I'd ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval to apply for grants from Oregon Department of Transportation, statewide transportation improvement fund, human services transportation fund through TRIMET for services provided by Clackamas County Social Services Division for the Clackamas, for Clackamas County seniors and people with disabilities. Approval to apply for continuation grant for Oregon Department of Transportation, special transportation formula funds through Ride Connection for services provided by members of the Transportation Consortium of Clackamas County for Clackamas County seniors and people with disabilities. Approval of an agency services contract with Hillside Christian Fellowship for warming centers services, and approval of amendment number three to a professional services amendment with Laboratory Corporation of America, LabCorp, for laboratory services for Clackamas County Health Centers Division. Under the Department of Transportation and Development acceptance of the Oregon Department of Transportation Safe Communities Grant for Educational Outreach for the Transportation Safety Action Plan. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of closing documents for the Hidden Falls property. And underwater environment services, approval of a public improvement contract between Water Environment Services and OBEC Consulting Engineers for services during construction for the 82nd Drive Bridge North Approach project. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Great. Do any of the commissioners want to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No, but I would like to speak to the item under Health, Housing, and Human Services with regard to the grant for, for human services transportation funds through TRIMET and ODOT for county seniors and those with disabilities. Know that during the HB 2017, we got more, more transportation money, and not only are we continuing this grant, but shortly, there'll be additional funds through that legislation that will allow more Ride Connection service to people in the, in the region for, for that. And, you know, there's still a significant unmet need, not unlike any other means of transportation in the region, but do want to point out that there are now, will, will be some additional funds, so we'll be, we'll have on our consent agenda in short time another one similar to this.
Great. And I actually want to talk about the ODOT Transportation Safety Grant. There was a point a few years ago where we weren't going to fund this program anymore, and ODOT said, well, we may not want to give you the grant anymore. And thanks to some negotiation with court, our court system, we did fund the individual that runs this program, Patty. She's retired, and we have a new person there who I have not met yet. And so this program is thankfully still in existence, and I want to thank Joseph Merrick for his hard work, and those volunteers on that committee that work with ODOT to address safety issues in the county. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. Did we already do the motion?
No.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve.
I will second, and I would like to make a comment.
Okay, Ken?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that for those who wonder whether or not NCPRD actually does things that benefit the community of Happy Valley, once again, on our agenda is an item that directly answers that question, and that is the Hidden Falls Park property in Happy Valley. So I hope that folks that are in Happy Valley are listening to this and take a serious look at what NCPRD actually has done to benefit their community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm sorry about not seeing that light much today for some reason.
I think you got your coffee cup in the wrong place.
Yeah, that's it. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. Now, next is the county administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've just got a couple of items. I wanted to let you know that last week, Rusty Amos, who is senior deputy district attorney with Clackamas County, received an above and beyond award for his efforts in anti-human trafficking efforts. And he was given this by the Oregon Department of Justice, because he has shown tremendous character and heart when fighting for justice against perpetrators and when working with victims of trafficking. Rusty was instrumental in developing a human trafficking multidisciplinary team for Clackamas County that promoted a victim-centered, multi-agency collaboration to combat human trafficking. Rusty currently leads all human trafficking prosecutions for Clackamas County in our district attorney's office, and he's a recognized leader in the anti-trafficking community. So I just wanted to extend our congratulations to Rusty on receiving this award, and thank Rusty for everything he's been doing on behalf of the citizens of our county and our residents. I also had a success story to relay to you involving the Sheriff's Corrections Substance Abuse Program, known as CSAP. This program helps incarcerated drug addicts receive important treatment so they can begin new lives of sobriety. What we had heard from a local resident about his son, who had a great youth, excelling in sports and receiving good grades, but then as he grew older, he began using drugs, particularly during his college years, and then over the next 20 years, he was arrested more than 15 times, spent two Christmases in jail, crashed four cars, lost six jobs, and destroyed countless relationships. After one of his arrests, though, a Clackamas County probation officer advocated for this gentleman to be able to enroll in our CSAP program, and because of the program, he's now two years sober. He is working full-time, he's driving again, going to meetings and rebuilding broken relationships. The mother wrote to the county saying, "We have our son back, and it's all because of the dedicated staff that worked tirelessly to help him learn to manage his disease. Thank you to everyone at Clackamas County who has advocated for funding for this life-changing program." And so I just wanted to thank his mother for the note, and also wanted to extend a big thanks to the staff of our Sheriff's Community Corrections Division for the fine work that they do, so.
Great, thank you. Well, we're to Commissioner Communication, and Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, and I do have quite a bit to report, so I'm going to put that up front here. Last week, I was not at the meeting, because I was at the National Association of Counties' Presidents and Executives Meeting, and this is a national meeting with all our statewide executives and presidents of the associations. I learned a number of things. There is an initiative, National Collaboration of Infants and Toddlers. It is an initiative of support for early childhood education. As a part of those meetings and those conversations, I will be bringing forth to the board a potential of a resolution to support this initiative and look at the opportunity for dollars from the nonprofit sector through the National Association of Counties. for dollars from the nonprofit sector through the National Association of Counties. I do want to assure people that when we do these, uh, kinds of conversations and trips, the whole goal is to bring something substantive back to our counties. Also, I had the opportunity to meet with all five of the members of our congressional delegation and their staffs. Very interesting conversations. It appears as if, uh, the, the one area of agreement across, uh, the, uh, the Washington, DC, whatever we're calling it right now, it's, it's a little bit dysfunctional, uh, is infrastructure. And with Representative Disfazio as the chief person on the Transportation Committee at this point, um, there's a good opportunity that there will actually be some alignment with Congress and with the President. At least it's, that's one thing that they agree on is that we need infrastructure packages, not only for transportation, but for water, for sewer, bridges across this nation. So there is a, a bright piece of hope there. I was able to, um, listen to members of the Trump administration who basically focused on infrastructure. And they also, uh, in, in the, uh, in, in order to be fair, we also had meetings with Speaker Pelosi's office. So, um, we're hearing it from the top that despite, uh, that there seems to be a shutdown and lots of disagreements, it does appear that there will be some movement towards infrastructure. So at least I was happy, uh, happy to see that. Um, also, this morning, I attended the Clackamas Workforce Partnership Board where they had Chuck Robbins, our housing, uh, authority director, present on how we are rebuilding capacity for housing here in the county. And one of the questions was that there is a homeless, uh, kind of, uh, under-the-bridge piece on I-205, and they asked what we were doing about it. And I said, well, we do, but we, we can, we don't want to criminalize houselessness. And the real issue is, points to the fact that we don't have enough capacity for people. I did report on our veterans shelter, and I gave a lot of credit to, um, Commissioner Savis. I think I said that without his efforts, I don't think it would have happened. He literally moved those pods on his own. Also, um, met with Catherine Grabowski-Johnson, uh, from our Business and Community Services as we continue to work, and I continue to work with the help of, uh, Commissioner Humbertstern on, uh, actually international trade for the county, which is actually, we are a net exporter, and we're really pushing ahead, I think, in innovating. Also chaired my first meeting of the Association of Oregon Counties. It was kind of like herding cats, but colleagues, not much different than what we can do here sometimes, so, uh, it was good. And I'm, uh, checked out my, a new copy of Robert's Rules of Order so I can herd the cats better for the next meeting. And we can come to decisions about what we're going to support mutually, uh, during this next legislative session, which is getting ready to roll out. Uh, and I think the biggest issue we're going to be facing across the counties is a, a cap and trade initiative and how we influence the outcomes of that conversation. Okay. So with that, let me move to the word of the week. Okay. Tenant. It's a noun, it's a principle. Did you know that something held to be true, valid, or essential by a group or organization is a tenant? Well, all would probably agree that the primary tenant of the library is to create joy through reading for everyone. Thank you, Kevin, for that. Okay, arts and culture in the county. Museum of the Oregon Territory presents Exposing the Past Through Oregon City Photography, Wednesdays through Saturdays, ten thirty AM to four thirty PM at the Museum of the Oregon Trail in Oregon City. Oregon City is a photogenic city, from the majestic Willamette Falls to the Mountain View, the municipal elevator, to all the historic buildings and landmarks on Main Street. However, this photographic infatuation with Oregon's hometown is just as historic as the city itself, with photographers of all life, walks of life, calling the city their home. Exposing the Past Through Oregon City Photography, the museum's latest exhibit focuses on all things photography from the lens of Oregon City Photographers eighteen fifty to nineteen twenty. Historic Oregon City presents a Glimpse into History with author Michael McCloskey, Saturday, January nineteenth, one PM at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. A Glimpse into History is a winner of top awards from the Great Northwest Book Festival and the Independent Booksellers Association. It features the words of over ninety figures who transformed Oregon into the premier green state. It's very appropriate for our times. They shaped the culture that saw value in nature and triggered demands for policies to protect it. Through their inspiring words, their presence is still felt. Uh, also, again, it's not on the, um, overhead, but Lakewood Theater for the Arts, uh, buy a ticket to see Dial M for Murder. And actually, this Sunday, I'm going to be going, uh, I'm a, a board member also, the Clackamas Repertory Theater, and we will be having our retreat this Sunday, planning on what the theater program's going to be looking like for Clackamas Rep. So buy your tickets, go to the theater. It's a wonderful experience, and it's supporting our local, local economies. So with that, I'm done. Okay?
Oh, thank you, Martha.
Yeah, I, usually when we, uh, at this point in the meeting, we always kind of bring something, um, uh, discuss, and typically I try to bring something that was significant for the week for me. And, um, I think Tuesday evening in Canby, uh, we were discussing, or there was a public, forum on the, uh, potential bridge, uh, regarding the Canby Ferry. And, um, very well attended. I'm sure there were well over a hundred people there, um, some other elected officials as well, was joined with, uh, Commissioner Humbertstern was also there. And, um, stayed from the very beginning to the end, um, left there, well, I think, went over an hour, I was over there an hour longer than it was scheduled to, to actually, um, to be there. But I, it was, for me, it was great really to see, number one, that public engagement involvement. And, um, uh, we were there coping with the problem. I think what we really presented, there was a challenge out there with the cost of the ferry being, um, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar annual burden, um, and some downtime when the, the ferry itself had to be repaired, um, and the complications and the difficulties encountered when we had to have the, the ferry repaired. And the community, I mean, when you actually pose something to the community, and so I'm a big believer in public involvement, um, people respond. And, you know, I heard some great ideas, uh, from the public. And, you know, we're elected, and, you know, we all have, we all bring value on the commission to problem-solving, but the citizens, don't forget, also bring tremendous value. And I heard some brilliant ideas and some, some points that were made that were literally invaluable, that hadn't been made before. Our staff did a great job, um, presenting the problem, and I do have people say, you know, they, you know, uh, they wanted to be further engaged in how this was, what, would move forward. And I think that even one of the comments was, uh, our concerns was very apparent. I wanted to just jump up to the front of the room and, and take the mic, but I, I did not. I refrained from that. Uh, well, I want to say, but we have not made a decision. You know, I think a lot of people assume that this was a done deal, that we were going to build a bridge, and no matter what their public input was, and I, we don't know. We're, we're still going to listen, we're still going to get all that input. But, um, you know, we can't be everywhere. Commissioner Bernard, he was in Happy Valley attending, and we all spread ourselves out to make sure we're, we're, uh, everywhere in the county. We need to be, um, attending the swearing-in for the, uh, new mayor and councilors, um, uh, from Happy Valley. But, uh, I, I bring this up, uh, only to say it was very, it brings me actually a lot of, um, a lot of satisfaction, just personal satisfaction, as others be, to see people engaged, to see people involved on solving problems. And I think if we did more of that, um, and, and actually engage people in a genuine way, I think we can expect really good results. And, and they know that they're going to be heard. Uh, one thing to my colleagues while they're here, I will say that it was not really clear to them, um, in the materials, how the next two sessions would go. There's a listening session, and then there's a, there's another, uh, meeting, I forgot the date, on this ferry issue, bridge issue, in which the board will deliberate, but there will be no public input. And I think there was a little bit of concern about that from the timing and so forth, that there ought to be indeed a listening session, but also an opportunity for people to make public comments. So maybe that wasn't the intention, but that's the way some people read it. But, um, wanna just, uh, I'll just end with that, and that was my significant, um, meaning of the week.
Thanks. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've got a couple of things I'd like to say, and then I'll go over some of the things that we did this week. With respect to the ferry, the, one of the ideas that came out of that, that I thought was very interesting, and I hope we can pursue, was, uh, a gentleman suggested that, uh, the community form an LID, and then be able to receive that ferry and take over that, the operations. Because they recognize that the, right now, the cost, the subsidy that we have, i- is not necessarily the wisest use of, of public resources. And speaking for myself, I'm willing to see the ferry go for another year, give them an opportunity to put together a district that could do this if they want to. Uh, and then after that, I think we have to make the financially responsible decision. I wanted to speak to the issue of infrastructure. Unfortunately, um, one of our guests left today. But, um, forty years ago, the federal government paid eighty percent of most of our major infrastructure projects. A good example of that was the sewer treatment plant right here in Oregon City. Today, w- with the expansion that we have to make, uh, we're having to pick up that price virtually one hundred percent, and that's twenty million dollars. The infrastructure plan that the federal government offered a year ago, um, was a very misleading plan. It said one-point-five trillion dollars in infrastructure. What they did not tell everybody was that eighty percent of that one-point-five trillion was supposed to come out of the local pockets, and only twenty percent come out of the federal government's pockets. Well, if we had eighty percent of the money, we'd scale the project down and do it ourselves. But the reality is, for those kinds of projects, we don't. So we need to be aware that many of these infrastructure projects, whether it's freeways or sewer treatment plants or water treatment plants, uh, much of that burden has been, uh, returned to the local citizenry, and we're going to have to be as efficient as we can with the money that we do get, but also honest with the public about the fees and taxes that we have to collect in order to maintain our infrastructure. And it's incumbent upon us to educate people about that and own it, um, and not be misleading about it. All that being said, uh, this week I attended the Slavic and Eastern European Heritage Celebration in Portland, um, enjoyed the music and enjoyed the food, and had the opportunity to meet a, the, uh, one of the newest members of the Portland City Council, Joanne Hardesty. Uh, hopefully we can build some positive relationships with our neighbors there. Commissioner Bernard and I attended the Stafford, uh, Hamlet Town Hall meeting, uh, where we had an opportunity to discuss some of our current issues with the community, and also watch them have their election of officers. Um, at AOC, uh, this week, the Association of Oregon Counties, I attended, uh, the Committee on, on Veterans, Public Safety, and Public Health, um, as well as now I have to attend the legislative session because I'm the vice chair of one of those committees. Can't get out early anymore.
Make sure that.
It's your fault.
It is.
Uh, this week I attended the Mass Timber Development Summit in, um, in Salem, and was a presenter on a panel, and was able to, uh, tell the attendees, which were government officials as well as business folks, um, what we have done in Oregon, or, and particularly in Clackamas County, to prepare for and be ready for the use of CLT and the development of that industry in our county. Uh, it was very well received, and I believe we will have an appointment with a provider that we've been trying to get ahold of for some time in the very near future, from D.R. Johnson. My, my dream would be to have D.R. Johnson, who really took the risk, um, and put this product out there and converted their plant to, to making cross-laminated timber. They were the first ones in Oregon to do it, if not in the United States. Uh, and I would like to see them have the opportunity to expand, uh, their operation right here in the Clackamas County, and reward them for their entrepreneurial risk-taking, quite frankly. As has already been mentioned, I attended the Canby Ferry Alternatives Meeting, um, and it was very clear, from what I heard at that meeting, that, uh, the, the community is not interested in a bridge. But they also understood that we have to make some responsible fiscal decisions with respect to the ferry itself. And then, uh, yesterday I attended the French Prairie Forum, um, where I met some of the newly-electeds from Aurora and, and, uh, the, um, one of the managers from the city of Wilsonville. And that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Hey, dogs today?
Oh, we do have a dog today, and it was sitting right in front of me. I think this has just gotten built in now. I have to be reminded each time for some reason. Uh, we got the picture is up, good. This is Bronco. He's a nine-month-old rottweiler looking for a home. He's a happy fella that is looking for an experienced owner who will help guide him through this great big world and help shape him into the best dog he can be. He is still growing and will likely be a large guy as an adult, so please keep that in mind. He will need a home where if children are present, they're at least thirteen years of age or older, and also no cats. So if you're a rottweiler-savvy person who is looking for a new buddy, come meet Bronco today. For more information about Bronco and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at five oh three, six five five, eight six two eight, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So on that CSAP success, I, uh, I also received a message, because this is somebody I know. Uh, I didn't know about the family issue, but, uh, it particularly reached out to make sure that the commission heard, uh, that, uh, it was very successful and that they're thankful the county had that. And I made sure you got it so you could, uh, read about, I mean, uh, address it. Uh, we had our first time, uh, at least for a long time, if forever, the Board of Health met. And, uh, we, um, brought back to life or created, uh, Clackamas County Board of Health. I'm not sure. I think we brought it back to life. Yeah. And, uh, so we had it, we're going to meet quarterly. Uh, yet, uh, earlier this week, we had a, a, a long marijuana, uh, hearing, uh, and I understand Ken met with some of the folks, stayed long, and, uh, you know, there was a little bit of communication, and I appreciate your efforts to, uh, get folks communicating. Yesterday I had, uh, lunch with the Monoman, Washington County Chairs. Uh, this, I also believe is the first time all three of us were Democrats, uh, which was interesting. So, uh, one of the things we talked about is two oh five, and, uh, we're going to draft a letter, uh, asking for their support, and they did indicate they might do that. Probably have to see the letter first. Uh, also talked about, and I, I probably won't get this right, but, uh, CCOs about, uh, Monoman, Washington County's desire to just have one rather than multiple ones. I think, uh, we've proven it to be very successful, and, uh, that's what we support. Um, we have also are getting closer on our county administrator recruitment. We have a discussion later today. But today, uh, Don's probably got one, two more meetings after this. Um, and, uh, want to say that, uh, earlier the week, he met with, uh, a group of, um, county employees, and, and they asked him a series of questions. Um, and, uh, in case you didn't know, uh, Don worked at Baskin and Robbins, yeah, uh, through high school, and, uh, if you ever need a cake decorated, he's the guy to ask. But, uh, I thought it was very worthwhile going to. Uh, I, I thought that, uh, you had a lot of great insight, and you mentioned some of you, of the successes. Of course, uh, no success, uh, is just one person. It's a team. And not only the board, but staff, uh, various managers, and the citizens all have important input. Uh, one, uh, and I'm not going to name them all because I can't remember them all. There are so many. West one ninety agreement, um, you know, I, I'm going to say ten-plus years, but it's probably twenty-plus years, that this issue's been a challenge, and the board, uh, the leadership, um, took some risk and, uh, created the West one ninety. It's probably one of the most important things we've done. Also, the Stafford Agreement, and how many elected officials, say?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. I thought it was thirty-one. I was going to exaggerate, it was fifty-one. Then I also attended, uh, a swearing-in of, uh, Happy Valley Mayor Tom Ellis. And I want to make, make sure that Happy Valley knows we're here, we're willing to work with them. We have a lot of issues that need to be addressed. Sunrise? Uh, what, what is their vision for annexation of, towards what was once Damascus? You know, we got a lot to talk about. And I, I suggested that we have a joint, uh, Happy Valley, uh, County Commission meeting sometime soon, uh, probably after, you know, the court stuff's all over with, and, and believe me, that is not where any of us wanted to end up. Well, let's say the PCC didn't want to end up there, I'm not quite sure. Well, let's say the BCC didn't want to end up there. I'm not quite sure. But we also, like was mentioned earlier, we have a couple listening sessions in the district to not only listen, but to provide information that is factual. And look forward to that, those meetings. We didn't have very good attendance at the other ones, but there were a number of reasons why. This one, I think, we will. But with that, I want to see, are we here next Monday? There's a holiday. So on Monday is Martin Luther King's holiday and a celebration of his life and what he had brought to this country. And I saw that on the calendar, Ken, you're going to a celebration in Portland on that day. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, when I met Joanne Hardisty at the Slavic get-together, I commented to her that, you know, it's fun to go and have different kinds of ethnic foods and that sort of thing. But I'd never had what you would really call down-home African-American cuisine. I mean, I've had what they call a Cajun dump once, which was very interesting and good. And so I said, you know, I'd love to do that sometime. Well, she took me up on it, clearly. So received an invitation to go to this, the Martin Luther King event, and so I'm going to go. I'm looking forward to it. I did tell her I wanted to be sure that the supports for the roof were strong so when I walk in, it doesn't fall in on me. But other than that, I'm looking forward to it.
And also, is this weekend your birthday?
The end of the month.
The end of the month. So then I'll hold off on my happy birthday until then. But with that, I'd like to thank everyone for watching and for attending the meeting, and we're adjourned.